Low-income working families by providing quality childcare assistance. So, you know, we support families, income-eligible parents who are working or going to school with subsidizing quality childcare. So I keep on reiterating qualities, that's one of our goals, is we want to ensure children have access to good, quality educational programs. And so whether if the children attend ECE here, or they choose to attend the childcare centers in our service areas, which is listed here, Mesa, Tempe, Phoenix, Scottsdale, and Glendale. Who is eligible for our CCDF services? It's any native child who is tribally enrolled and a federally recognized tribe under the age of 13. So they can use childcare services up until the age of 13 or 12, and then they can finish out here until this. We ask that, you know, families who have child designs in their household, that their income does not exceed 85% of state median income, and that the parents or guardians are working, or parents are working, attending job training or education. So every two years, we have a public hearing to kind of reassess where we're at, where the community wants us to go, and how we can guide our planning for that. So currently, our services, the services we provide through the CCDF funds are subsidized. We currently have about 99 children utilizing CCDF funding here at ECE. And then we also have the certificate program, which we send children out to. Like for childcare services, so if they're on the waitlist here at ECE, they can choose to take their child. The childcare center might be closer to their home in Mesa, or Scottsdale, Tempe, Glendale. So across those service areas, and so right now, we're serving approximately 315 native children across 120 charities in our program. And then we're also offering mini grants to child providers and community partners. So key definitions you might hear throughout our time together is, what is definition of an Indian child, enrolled in a federally recognized tribe and under 13 years old. Our service area, so if you hear "service area," you'll be like, "What's service area?" Service area is of course Salt River, you know, our Indian community, Mesa, Tempe, Phoenix, Scottsdale, Glendale. Protective care is defined as children placed in the care of someone other than the natural parent. By court, school is defined as a parent or guardian enrolled in school. So includes online as well. Working, paid employment of at least 20 hours per week. And then job training is considered role and meeting the program requires in the job training program. All right, so with that, I would introduce Tammy, she's our program leader for ECE, and she will share construction update. Welcome, everybody. So as you can see, the CCDF team, it's a little team, but they are a mighty team. They do a lot of work, if you can see. So I just wanted to share that one of the things where you see CCDF funds is the construction at the Early Childhood Education Center. This is the actual same presentation that was presented to the tribal council. So what we did. So we had some funds, we got some extra CCDF funds beyond what we get from a certificate program, and from COVID, and quite substantial amount. And so we always had the plan to adding on, or to be able to provide more services for our children here at the ECE. We always have about 90 kids on the waitlist. So adding on to our facility has always been something that we would look to do. So it was an opportunity. So we had a construction committee, we met three times, just kind of goes through the project goals. What we're hearing at the ECE is to increase services for children, and case services for parents and guardians, and to improve and retain a highly effective workforce. So this fit right into increasing services for children, and also these services for guardians and parents. So the committee met, we surveyed community members, ECE parents, staff, got an idea of what we're looking for in the construction. Here, you can see at the top, that's kind of what we're looking at. Where, and I've got a better picture that shows you what we're planning on doing. And then in the committee, we looked at what, we wanted to really make sure that our additions didn't look like additions, like look like just unified into our beautiful facility here. And then those are just some ideas about indoor multi-purpose room and indoor play space that the architect shared. So those are kind of some of the things that we wanted to make sure happened. So the architects gave us four options. And this is the option exactly where it's pitched, and it gives six new classrooms. And then we're having a upstairs or a fiction story will give us the classroom space. As we expand the staff and expand servicing, we need that space. And then this is where the green is, is what we're really excited about is a multi-purpose room that will have these iPhone garage doors, obviously, they're probably not with a big wall door that will open up so we can join the, like now, the mother from both sides, so we can have events in there. And then also a place for children to play in summer when it's so hot. So just another view of it, of just the classroom space. Again, the classroom space is that green color and our multi-purpose spaces that. And then this is even a larger view, you can see where the additions are going to be, but also on the back there on chopper rail and parking those. Some of you may know when we have events that. So having more staff parking back there. And then this is kind of some views of what it will look like. Second story, really cognizant about making sure that it didn't look. So I'm here too, so like this is the second story would be here. And these are two additional classrooms, and just continuing with the current theme of our site. I'm waiting for questions, but I mean, you guys are following your own style. All right, so like Tammy shared about the construction, looking back in our notes, because I started in this position, just brand new, and I still have a baby in January. So I started in this position in January. So looking back, like Lisa and I were looking back at our notes from previous years. And actually, in 2016, it's a public hearing, it was brought up to expand ECE. So thinking back, it started that vision for, you know, from the community came back in 2016 to start on expanding the site. So really neat, but a lot to celebrate, and like Tammy shared, our team is small and mighty. So just a little images of what we've been doing for the last couple of years with our plan and our programs. So we've been doing distribution, and a lot of families received materials, care packages. That was part of the CCDF funding and educational materials as families were working. Maybe some families working from home, but children were at home for remote learning. We provided, we still provide support for childcare providers throughout the valley to improve on quality through mini grants. We are offering co-payments to be waived. So right now, if you qualify, so some families utilize the CCDF funding. Depending on the income, the fees are being waived currently. So if you might notice if you're an ECE family, that the co-payments fees have been waived. And that's what's for 2021 school year, and then it was now extended till next school year as well. And then same thing for certificate families, those co-payments have been waived. And we've been paying for the additional fees. So any additional fees, like some centers were providing or charging technology fee or supplies fee, we've been covering those costs. And some families have shared, I think with Jessica, with our ECE enrollment, she shared that some families were able to obtain full-time employment, their college degrees, and job certification while using certificate programs. So a lot of families who completed like their medical assistant degrees or different degrees have now employed full-time employment at River People Health Center, based on their children being in certificate program. So they shared that back with us. And then the last question Lisa shared with us is that CCDF certificate program payments, just for this past year alone, this fiscal year, payments have, she's paid out 1,718 plus dollars in payments to childcare centers. So just to see that, just in that past year, you know, we received millions of funding from the office of childcare. Where does it go? So it was pretty neat that she was able to pull that number together to see our families are utilizing the services and all that to be paid out. So a lot to celebrate, and I think that we need to do more of that with our program. So we, a grandparent who utilized, this is shared with us, and I know the text is small, so I'll read it. But she shared, "We are ever so grateful for this certificate program. It has helped us in so many ways since ECE was on remote." I am a mother of six and a grandmother of three. I now have custody of two, and who are currently in kindergarten. I wasn't sure what I was going to do when the tribal offices had to make decision to close down. ECE staff was very quick to offer, to offer help through the certificate program as an alternate for temporary daycare in my area. So we'll get the gist of the whole thing. But she shared, you know, when we, you know, moved to remote services, that, you know, the staff, like mainly Lisa and Elizabeth worked so quickly to enroll the family into certificates. We were able to use a childcare center in Scottsdale. Showed her appreciation. And something that we've also done this year, beginning July. So in July of this year, we've increased our maximum reimbursement rates to childcare providers. So what that looks like previously are, if a child was attending, you know, and their monthly tuition was 1,165, and the rate we would subsidize was 1,058, this difference would have to go to the family, and so they would have to pay that the out-of-pocket, where typically their co-payment was zero dollars. So with the new reimbursement rates, so it's not proposed because that was at that time, but we were able to increase our maximum subsidized rate. So then the family's responsibility came zero. So really kind of looking at, you know, as childcare centers and childcare providers increase the rates that we match and make sure that we're not passing on that, those out-of-pocket fees to families. So, you know, making sure our team does the research and ensures that we're providing the best for families, children and families. Another awesome thing that we're so, we were so excited to bring was, because I emphasize on that word "quality," we wanted to make sure that we, as families come in to enroll, that we share and educate families to kind of direct them to program that are quality and are nationally accredited. So sometimes centers might not be enrolled in quality first programs. So quality first is a star rating program from First Things First. So they have an opportunity to, so typically, our certificate program is the minimum requirement is state licensed. And so if childcare centers are quality, it's above state license requirement, and then nationally accredited is a little bit higher than that as well. So we reimburse, our goal is to encourage families to do the research, see what's the best care for their program, that meets the needs for their family. And they can choose, so they're not limited based on the charges provided by the childcare center. So this is for certificate program only. All right, so with that being said, I need to say, we are three potential changes that are coming. I've gathered the past, well, my couple months that I've been here, but our team and Tammy, and we connect with different departments in our program and in the community. So we get a lot of feedback on how the changes, you know, might benefit families, either from families or childcare providers. But some of the feedback we received are in these three areas. So I'll share information out on these specific areas. So the first one, or one area is on the definition of protective services. So what apply for ECE. And the certificate program, categorical eligibility, and that would be specifically just for ECE. And then the last one is including the additional fees waived for certificate program only into our. We'll, we'll be that in a little bit. First is the category for eligibility. So we're looking at specifically just for ECE. So the eligibility that I shared before would remain with certificate program. So, and I put little sheets of paper out there, so that would remain for certificate program. But what this means is the eligibility for ECE would change. And so what that means is the main two difference would be waiving the income eligibility for families, and then waiving the work-school job training requirement. So families, all families would have to, or a child must be living in our service area. They must meet our definition of Indian child. Will waive the income eligibility, will waive work-slash-school-slash-job training requirement. But we will still enroll based on the needs, so the highest needs first, which we are currently doing right now. And then, and then, so the highest needs first, so 102 slots for head start, 80 slots for early head start, which meets our head start performance. And then we'll still continue to gather income from families, so. Any income they're receiving and their family size, so that we can ensure that we're still having co-payments. So some benefits and implications of the categorical eligibility for ECE. All ECE children enrolled will be eligible for full-day services from 7:00 AM to 6:00. The implication or drawbacks would be potential increase of full-day children with required notes passed. Already a short-lived and heavy process in background check. And then the second part, the benefit for that would be, would extend services to unique family circumstances. So again, it has been shared that if currently with this eligibility that we have currently, a family who is a one parent, and maybe the other parent is on disability, they wouldn't qualify for the extended day services. With this allowing categorical eligibility for ECE, that specific family would be eligible for full-day services or extended day services. Another example is a non-pistolial guardian not working, a guardian having power of attorney or adoption. And then sometimes families who are working for the day labor program that currently does not qualify for a full-day or extended day services. So this would allow parents to, you know, use those programs, utilize those programs, but then they would be able to stay full-day or extended. And some of the drawbacks, the teacher planning time would be reduced if they get future positions. All right, so the next piece is the definition of protective services. So currently, our current definition, which I shared before, reads, children who are in care of either state or tribal CPS services or child protective services are wards of court or placed in foster care. Like a court foster care is defined as a child being placed in legal care of someone other than a natural parent. So the proposed changes are defined as children who are receiving protective services through appropriate agencies and foster care, state or tribal, or in kinship care. And then the last bullet, two bullet points are what were proposing to be changed. So we noticed families coming to us looking for support in crisis situations due to domestic violence, or safety plan has been put into place. And then protective services as defined with a parent or guardian who are attending outpatient or outpatient drug and alcohol rehab program or treatment centers. So that's something that we've noticed families who are currently coming to our program who might not qualify for CCDF services if they're, the last two bullet point. So this is something we would like to add into the definition of our protective services, so that we can service those families who may be utilizing those programs. All right, and then the last one is additional fees waived. So I did share this in our celebration, but this is something that we hope to, you know, even after the funding for COVID or the first funding rundown. So if that funding runs out, we want to make sure that we bring it into our plan so that we can support CCDF or certificate program families by paying these fees if the center is charging the fees for the family. So we want to make sure that we're able, families are able to go to these providers without having to pay a lot out of pocket. So we want, we want to encourage again that quality program, those educational programs. Because we know the zero to five are the most important years for children to, as they build their foundation. So the only thing that this would cover is the late piece. So we're hoping that families can pick up to their children and having late. So yes, so just to review, the three changes we're asking is the, you know, or getting ideas, so generate ideas. If you feel like, okay, that might not work for my family, or my program, or the community, this is what we want to do that. So we want those feedbacks in these three areas. Or if you have any ideas, like, why don't you do this? Why don't you guys, haven't you thought of doing this? It's, you know, we welcome those, those things. So thank you for being here. This is our moment to kind of share. This is, this came from a childcare center that they shared to our staff. This is kudos to certificate program Elizabeth Philbert and Lisa Lloyd, a childcare provider certificate program reached out to the team to thank them for working with families and supporting the center and improving on their quality. So this is a mini grant that we received, so from a mini grant. All right, so we'll open up for public comments and suggestions. Again, just helpful reminders, I think, to ensure that everyone gets, has a chance to speak. We just asked five minutes or less. And Lisa has these helpful signs to kind of guide us to, to help us remember. I need this to kind of say, okay, one, two, and then time this up. And then, of course, we don't want this, our goal is not to have just a one-night conversation of, okay, this is it, one and done. We recognize it as ongoing. So we're hoping that, you know, it was brought up last week at the policy council meeting to join a district meeting. So that's something we're going to be doing for, you'll see us more in the community. We're just a small team, we're wanting to grow big, so thank you so much. Keep your weddings with us already. Is anyone willing to go first? Any comments, suggestions, or ideas? Or if you want to take that comment spawn with you as well, take that with you, bring it, or you want it back.
Okay, you talked about like the new expansion and everything that you want to be, you know, for new hires. Your number is increasing every year, and your staff is increasing. Why is that so difficult?
I think, I think like I shared the slide is, our hiring process right now is, is kind of tricky. So we're hoping to kind of, we've requested additional staff for our team. So that's kind of in the works right now, a request we want staff for our team, so we can grow. That's something we've really, really wanted to kind of grow in that sense of numbers.
And I can share that childcare and early childhood care is problematic, you know, not just here, but nationwide.
Yeah, I have, I have two quality items I just wanted to just bring up, just real briefly. I wanted to talk about the importance of literacy, which includes reading to young children, beginning writing and storytelling. And I work with the Salt River Schools with the grants. And we were lucky enough to receive a Native Youth Community Projects grant, which was focused on literacy in college and career-going. And that grant will be ending in the next year. So I wanted to bring up the importance of literacy and requesting that literacy be included in the CCDF pre-print. And I have a couple of specific ways, I just wanted to just put it to the comments, to continue to provide books for children in the CCDF classrooms, so their classroom libraries are wonderful, but to also include that with our own, with our centers that we support with mini grants, and our homes for the certificate program families, as well as our after-school programs, particularly at Salt River Elementary School with recreation and Wolf and places like that. Also, we have an emphasis on Native American authors and kind of encouraging those folks to be within these classroom libraries. The other books would be books for children to take home and read with their family, and then to provide literacy events for families, those at early childhood, as well as those at after-school programs. And then hopefully to provide additional professional development to keep your staff on top of good literacy practices in the classroom for children, and as well as those staff to work with like kids in after-school programs. So, and then I have one other one, and I just received a follow-up email from the Phoenix Symphony yesterday. And it's just a thought, that Phoenix Symphony is interested in working with ECE as well as with after-school programs, and that could potentially be a quality item that could be included in the plan. Thank you very much.
And Lisa, why is taking notes the diligence?
Other question.
Other question. So going off of, um, what Ms. Matur had stated about professional development and then knowing that, um, one of the limitations was, uh, staff shortages and kinds of that professional development. What can we do to ensure that, uh, we can add more quality professional development for the staff? Is there something that we as a community can, uh, specify specifically?
And I think that's great because we, we've talked about, you know, how can we have a balance with folk? Because we, we recognize that it's really important to have that professional development, ongoing training for staff, and especially for staff retention, but then also not having, uh, making sure we're not closed a lot of days. But families can need child, but that balance that we have to maintain. Um, and so, you know, we, we were kind of thinking ideas of how like we can maybe reach out to our childcare providers and how we can reach out for support to kind of partner with them a little bit more, like a little better, to kind of support each other so we can still have the coverage for childcare, but then have, make sure that we ensure our staff are being So it's about how, how, kind of generating those ideas and then adding a veterans.
So I guess that's my question is, is that we know that we, that we value the professional development, but we also don't want to hinder the working parents and those in school. Uh, but what can we do, like what are some specific ideas that we can stay to ensure that we have the highest quality for our, you know? And is that something that we decide or, uh?
I think both. I think input from like, uh, both of, the both ways. I think, um, you know, it's, we, we have to kind of make that decision. Okay, we're going to partner with certain, you know, certain childcare centers to kind of ensure that we have high quality, we're sending, you know, children who want to go, you know, who might need the childcare services, um, that they're getting quite a high quality care, but then maybe on those closer days, we're, we're having professional development. So I think it's kind of both, that we, you know, we need to kind of, okay, this is maybe something we need to do, but then also if families have an open, uh, or, you know, maybe a family might say, well, I can take a day off, or I, um, you know, like, how can we maybe reimburse families for that day, like we at home, you know, so the parent is at home with their child for that day. We look at reimbursing that family, um, for being home and then we can be off to have our professional development. So it's about having like an open discussion and like brainstorming ideas.
I do like to reimburse my ideas.
Yeah, so I need to have money for like a free. So I mean, like, and then that would provide opportunity because we know parents and families are, um, their child's a teacher and most importantly, right? So we want to kind of, like, oh, that might be a great bonding opportunity, but then our staff are getting trained. So I think having more of this open conversation and sharing ideas, um, because it can't just come from a few of us. And the strength was from this.
No, I'm not saying that that can happen is when we go to, we have to make sure that's allowable and that is part of the business that we want to ask. And a program.
We can ask all we can do.
The, the program. And I, I know what you've done in the past when we have a Friday off, um, where we would close the ECC is that we would give families tickets to the zoo or we would leave them there and, and make sure that we, we could pay for them to go into the zoo, the butterfly, or different activities on those Fridays so that they could spend that time, um, with, with their children and then we had the day off. So, so there's a lot of those, um, those things, you know, hiring, getting, um, recruiting, some, getting our extended day, um, staff that we have, people have 17 openings for them and it's, it's a part-time position looking at, well, maybe, maybe part-time isn't going to work for someone, you know, maybe we do it, make those full-time. But then also getting those all filled so that, that allows staff to come out of the classroom. Right now, we don't have those positions. You can't put in, so. So we're fully down. But we have been, and the policy council and the education board just gave us, um, during fall break, gave us Friday off and we had a wonderful, beautiful experience for the staff. So that was, um, that was really helpful for us.
I had a question. So what is your state median income? What you got?
Okay, first, I'm glad to be here. Share my speed.
The state median income, I remember she said, in there, that they have to not pass the state median income?
Okay, so this is right here, listed maybe 5% of the state median income. So it depends on your, your family size. And, um, I think it's in this PowerPoint, but it's hidden. So if you, that's why the, um, if you go by according to size, um, and then you kind of go over and then it says level four. Yeah, depending on, so is it over? So this is probably our CCF limit. So if it goes over, then the certificate program, they may not qualify for the program. I think they're in this disciplines, right? Based on their family size and then their.
So you have family of seven and then upper four, level four is 98,000. But if you make more than that, you're not qualified. So you make less than 98,000, you're qualified?
Yeah, so then, yeah, but then for, for when we talk about ECC, we're waiving that income eligibility. So we, we would still collect the income, so we don't have to, we're hoping, but then we're waiving, um, this eligibility. So if, if the family is above, um, and they would qualify to the CCGF services.
Okay, and then my other question is, you stated that there are 305 in the certificate program and you paid out 1.7 million on that. How many of that 305 were community members?
Um, I would have to look at the number, but I can get that to you. I'm sure it's, but it's a little bit of my ability to answer the active session. So you want to get it right now?
But I have a nephew that had a three-year-old, so he couldn't get into ECC.
Then they would go on her way.
The number is.
Waive that eligibility.
The number is 58.
58.
Yes, 58 children that are enrolled in.
Are only community members.
In the certificate program.
The tribe community can be made aware of this certificate program that allow this number to increase. But I'm pretty sure that how many is on the waiting, how many is on the waiting list?
How many is on the waiting list?
For ECC?
Right now, we have 112.
Well, once we open up more classrooms, it will clear a lot of the access. Um, and then more kids is the classic.
Yeah, and what I'm saying is that, is there any way you can make the community more aware of this program? That would be my suggestion. So, if my nephew was able to do that, then he should have utilized it, you know?
I, I think that, that is our goal, but right now, that's one of the requests, is that having an enrollment person. Cause right now, uh, Elizabeth is doing our enrollment and she's our CCGF exam. And then we requested another Elizabeth, so another CCGF exam, so we can, so we can go out and do the outreach into the community. Just right now, we're on, like.
And you have a vacancy.
Yeah, and we have a vacant position, which Lisa's put on that as well. So she's a huge role.
This is my question to Mr. Herr.
Yes, ma'am. Or the other meeting, yes. The problem is with the hiring process. So has that been resolved? Because the hiring process is through the tribal HR. And the tribal HR is what's holding back the hiring. That's why we can't hire anybody.
So little, so a little bit yes, a little bit a no, right? So you are right. It's all flowing, our HR flows through tribal HR. There is no more HR specific to the education division. So part of what holds us up on that process is that everybody has to go through that VIE background check. So because we have the one tribally controlled, our, our tender through sixth grade school is tribally controlled and the whole division. So no matter if you're coming to work at Head Start, early Head Start, if you're going to work at our secondary alternative school, because of that one tribally controlled school that runs through Department of Interior, VIE, we have to do that whole VIE background check. And that can take upwards, six weeks if we're lucky, eight weeks sometimes. Sometimes we've seen it take longer and that is holding things up right now. We are trying our hardest. So, you know, the director has been fill the vacancy. So I have put pressure on folks to say, okay, make sure that you are posting things, make sure you are holding your interviews. And we are trying our hardest to, you know, get our part that we have control going. But then once we do that hiring and we turn that name in and say, this is our name, it's that background check that holds everything up. So it's a great question, Ms. Manuel. I wish that I had a better answer, but I cannot override that VIE background check.
As to your question regarding families that are on the waitlist, the only reason why it's really hard for a lot of the families to qualify for certificate program is the work and school requirements. They don't have to meet those requirements. But what the ladies are trying to do is allowing families that are doing the, uh, the daily labor programs, uh, with families dealing with rehab or, uh, under crisis. We will want to provide services for those families to benefit themselves. With that, if they're on the, they're on the waitlist for ECC, they're community children, allowing that to go through and getting that approved, we can allow more community program to realize outside childcare. And with them being enrolled in the certificate program, it also gives them additional points for the waitlist for ECC to get in. So we will want to benefit and help, and help our families improve in what their situations are in. A lot, and this will definitely help a lot of the families, when this change that they're doing. And self-experience certificate program has been around for 12 years. Um, and it's going to be helpful for, I would say, this state of big change and student numbers increase. Um, it will be a little bit, I would say, once they go to.
So of the 112 on the waiting list, how many are you in the certificate program?
That I would have to run a report to say how many. I've been working closely with Elizabeth, so we can, um, also reference that our numbers are accurate, that the faculty who are in the certificate program are getting those points, um, on the waitlist.
I know, because, um, when my two grandchildren are on the waiting list, I tried to utilize the CCGF program. I mean, you had it there, it was there. But the childcare services out there weren't as good as here.
Yeah, and that's a very way we can figure out how we can keep these people.
How many kids are going to be in the new six classroom, you said?
Um, it's, it's looking like around 60 children. It's pretty what age we put in these classrooms. The other thing is that, so currently we categorical eligibility, we were talking about just doing it for, um, the privately operated, which is ECC. We could do, uh, categorical eligibility for the certificate program too. Um, that would open it up all of those qualifications exponentially. Um, but, um, but that is something we could do also. Right, and that would take more staff. Um, we would, we would have to, you know, have a waitlist, but that would potentially, could potentially open it up to those children that are, um, on the ECC waitlist, but that are over income to utilize. That's not, that's not the suggestion right now, but I mean, you know, that could be your comment. We can also too, when we have a plan in place, we can also amend our plan, which we have done because we raised the rates, um, you know, the reimbursement rates, because we want to, we want to have that quality. So that's always something that we have a plan, a two-year plan, but we can also amend it. It's a process. So, um, and, but it is something that we've done because it's just, yeah, that's the right thing to do.
So do you make your own qualifications, like all these procedures or statutes, or does that come from somewhere else?
Uh, so we thought, CCGF has guidelines. So that's in the pre-print. And that's like we said, we come up with a lot of ideas and then we, we see as we read it, does that fit, does that fit in the program? And so improving quality is childcare before and after care, um, throughout the community. And that's why we do the programs that Chris was talking about, that is about changing first quality. And that is something that, that the CCGF program is about, is increasing quality, raising the quality of childcare for all children. And so, you know, so that is, we have to, you know, reimbursing someone, uh, right now in order to reimburse, it has to be a licensed childcare provider. So then that gets trickier with regulations. That's why I say it's a great idea. I don't know how we would figure that out.
Any other feedback or ideas or?
Yes.
Um, just going off of Kim's question about trying to help connect families on the waiting list, I'm just wondering if there's a way we can standardize our practice, because when we receive an ECC application, we do like a screening. So I'm wondering if we can do a standardized, like, screen for interest in certificate program if they're eligible. And then.
That's what's going right now.
Yeah.
That's the process what Elizabeth and I are working with to make sure the programs can be taken. Um, when I process an application and I see that a family may qualify for certificate program, I will pass on that information and just letting them know. Cause I was the first point of contact, where I see your household, any of their bill or.
Yeah, because I know, like, if I take an application and typically families are in need for school or work and I try to refer.
Yeah, and there are families that may qualify as far as income under the threshold, you can say median, but it falls back to the working or going to school. That's when you won't be able to make it forward.
And I feel like what I've seen is that when they are working or going to school, then they're over income for the.
That can be calculated. And how that income is calculated is based on both. So.
I was told that per cat was considered gift, not a work income. So how are you using that as work income if it's just a like a gift?
So it, what we consider per cap is because it's taxed, it's taxed.
But it's not work income, you know what I mean? They're not working for that. It's, yeah, if given to us, but according to the IRS, we got to pay tax on it. So that's why I don't understand how, can't bypass that if it's not work income, because you're basing it on, I'm assuming right here, work income, right?
Because you're basing it on, I'm assuming right here, work income, right? This is work income.
Right, this is household total income. It can be lease money, it can be, yeah, it can be all income of the household. So it's guided by Head Start standards that we're using right now. But again, that could be something we look into. I did hear possibly another program in the community is not using per cap to calculate household income like this. I don't know if that's something that we might be able to change.
It's not a set. I mean.
We use, we use last year's, we go by, we get it from treasury, from the community and use the prior year's income to calculate for this year. So that way, since it does fluctuate all that time, every quarter.
So with that comment, that might be why there's a larger list this year because of COVID numbers. Where COVID revenue was lower, correct?
And we don't, we aren't counting the, the additional, the supplemental, when they've given the additional fifteen hundred, we're not counting that in. Since that is not taxed.
No, I'm talking about the revenue, the casino revenue lower during COVID.
Okay.
Which allowed more families the opportunity to get on.
I can look to see what the differences were. I think one year there was like a ten dollar difference.
So just to confirm that the option would be to remove, one option is to remove this, move, remove the income.
We still. That's for ECEC only.
So the option that you could do, both programs categorical eligibility, which is waiving income and waiving the work school requirement. But right now, we're proposing that it would just be for the privately operated CCBF type, just because we don't have the staff right now. And doesn't mean we can't do it later, it's just right now, we're already short staffed. And then we requested additional permission to put right in our people, which it's not. So it's just, it's just, we're barely, honestly, we're very rarely trying to keep up with what we do. We're doing our best with what we have. So at that time, maybe when we can always amend it and.
We, we could do, we could do categorical eligibility and then knowing that, so right now with the stock that we have in place right now. We can do about three hundred and twenty certificates of slots. And so you would still, like, this is the workforce I have. We can still only provide about three hundred and twenty, that's what this group can serve, it's about three hundred and twenty slots. And then the others would have to get moved. So I think that is a possibility. We used to have a waiting list for the CCBF until, until we got quite an increase in funding. And so then we, we didn't have people waiting list, we were able to process requests as they come in. But we have a recruiting for them. So, so I mean, it could be a possibility.
Do we keep track of the, though? I think the only reason why I would open it up, not only because it would give us an opportunity to have early childhood, but if we opened it up, it would actually have better data of how many are in. So that when we do go through tribal fund or other programs, we know we have five hundred kids on this list. Whereas if we keep it on here, they're just turned away, they don't even put in an application, but they know they don't qualify. When in reality, there is a great. So I understand the staff and again, I appreciate you guys so, so much and, and wearing multiple hats. But again, I feel like if it's openly, it doesn't change anything, right? Because you can't, you can't serve them, right? So they'll just be on the waiting list, but that waiting list will show the need, which will then hopefully eventually open more programs. But maybe I'm off, am I missing something? So I think that happens a lot with me, you have to carry a waiting list. If someone said, you know, like, yeah, let me find whatever, I'm going to say, oh, there's a waiting list for that. So you could, we probably could have more of a, a list of interests. Because to actually go through the whole process, if you know you're going to be one of the two on waiting list, I wouldn't do that.
The other thing with categorical eligibility is that we still have to prioritize the children with the most need. Just like, you know, like Head Start. So those would be the children with the most showing the most need or families would be the ones that would be selected first. And so the results of maybe the families that already stayed, it could be the same results.
Oh, yeah, I hear you. I would just, I guess, suggest that we do keep track of the, the interest. And I'm talking like those that are, that don't qualify at all, like not enrolled, only live here. Or, you know, income, like every single thing, I would ask to, to have that stayed in track. Yeah.
Yeah, and that's exactly where we got some of our ideas was because we found like, oh, yeah, couldn't help that family. Because the, the one parent was working and the other parent had a disability. So it's like, well, right? So it's kind of like, that's why I was saying, we, we can change our definitions, the program and change the definitions, right? So then here's my, well, maybe we should, that's why that's the just. So, so we do as we go along, but.
And same thing with partnering with other tribes. So like Fort McDowell, we're, you know, has, has been trying to say, okay, well, we now we're servicing some children, native children, Scottsdale. So what can, what does that agreement look like? So it's having that conversation and then having that, that way of to track. So for example, like we've had to, you know, families that are in Queen Creek may not qualify for our services because they're not in our service area. But having that information, so we can track and say, okay, well, maybe that's how Glendale was recently at, well, not recently, three years ago. It was added to the program because we were noticing families were living in Glendale and outside of our service area. And then we can have, so we, this is the awesome thing about CCBF, it's like reevaluated every two years. But it's only, it's like, like, just like you're showing, I didn't like that. During that, like, okay, well, maybe we can do this, but have a tracking system. What if we go?
I have another question. How many applicants aren't being used right now?
Five.
Well, since I, I have the cultural department to open our classroom, so I pretty much, you know, that works really well for them to have that. So five.
Which protocol, how many kids?
Depends on the classroom. I have two. Or maybe two. And another fifty, about sixty.
And that president will stand.
I did come across to where since the background checks are taking so much longer, maybe you hired somebody. But this somebody can't afford to not work, so they're taking on a job.
Yep, yeah.
And so then you move that person.
Go block that BIE around.
Well, you know, because you talk about the quality for the children, equality for the children, what about these girls that are winning all? And weren't they all? It's hard on them.
Well, I'm a gaming investigator for CRA for the casino. I don't understand why they can't use the same sites that we use to do the background on our employees at the casino. I don't understand why no one's making the initiative to talk to, who did you say, BIE?
I'm, I'm wondering in the past, was it only if you worked at the elementary school, you needed to pass a BIE background check? And not at the other schools? And did they change that or when did that change? How did that change?
They all went through. That's how they come here.
Well, most of the most recent hiring caring, it's because I had to wait two and three months, two and a half months from the day I was offered the position to actually walking foot on campus, two and a half months. And I had saved, but I had actually called and said, listen, is there a problem? Because I can't wait any longer. If it goes beyond two weeks, I'm not going to be able to take the job. So there, it is, it is a long way for that. But even overall, there are no ECEC teachers. People just aren't going into that field like they used to. And that whole mentality of changing it, instead of thinking of it as daycare or extended care. You have to think of it, we have to use our, our voices and promote it as early education. So that when we talk about this quality of care, quality of care, it shouldn't matter if, if it's a Head Start program that ends at two o'clock or a, a, a ECEC classroom stays open till six. It should all be the same all the time. If there's a, a, a center that we're partnering with, there should be somebody that we should be helping those individuals take pride in not calling themselves as daycares or childcare centers or they need to be early educated. They need, they need to feel that confidence so that they can represent the native children that are on the certificates and educate them the way they deserve to be educated, just like the children here at ECEC. So there's a lot of different elements. And this, this, this shortage on ECEC teachers, it's a pandemic of its own. That's not going to clear up, if not anytime soon. So when we do have quality teachers and we do have quality applicants, there needs to be a faster process. Because not everybody has somebody to fall back on. There may, they might be a single parent themselves. That's, these are great dreams and we want to stay with them, but we have to be realistic too. That teachers are getting burnt out too. Are you still have time?
Type that.
Call the card out.
We have about eight minutes. Seven o'clock. Sorry, anybody to, to fill out the form if you want to add payback time or if you have questions. I'm available, families available are stacked, we have a lot of ETC staff here as well are available.
Yeah, and if you think of something, you know, should we, we got that deadline because we're, we're going to start working with the plan. But we work with our CCBF program specialist and on the regulations and both of them do. But put out those ideas and then we can take them and say, hey, this is, this is our need in our community. How can we make that happen?
We're not tracking.
Yeah, shoot out the ideas.
Does CC, do they supply the training for the partnerships in the Glendale, Tempe, Scottsdale? Do they supply training for those teachers?
It's, it can be offered, like, so they can use, apply it to the mini grant so they can get training. We don't do the training, but that's, that's an idea.
Only because then you might be able to service more native children, even if it's not here on ECE, ECE grounds that actually will be in the community. If there was something set up so that training would be offered, whether there was a, some kind of partnership with the community college or with ASU or even, you know, just independent people training on specific topics.
I think that's kind of what I was, like, close with sharing earlier too, right?
Yeah, kind of, but much broader, taking it all, representative of all of them. The literacy is important, but it's every area.
Every. At least I got that there. I also have one on the comments forum, Tina.
Heaven, to answer your question about the per cap amounts. I can just give you like the last four years that I have here. In two thousand eighteen, it was eleven thousand five hundred. Two thousand nineteen, we were trending up, going to twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty-six. Twenty twenty came, that's when COVID, the casino closed and we went down to nine thousand. And that's what we calculated the following year, you know, so we were still coming out of that. There was relief pay, but again, we didn't count that in there. And then now what we're currently using was last year's in two thousand twenty-one and it was ten thousand nine hundred and forty-eight.
So my, I guess the point was like, because it was lower, more families qualified during that time. Or you didn't see any difference in that?
I didn't see any difference with the per cap. And, and it does fall, even if the families, Jessica can probably confirm, but if the families are only receiving per cap, they still are incomitable, correct?
Yes, they would still fall below that, that level one there, which just a one-parent household that's just receiving per cap. That would fall under that. If it's a two-parent household receiving per cap, depending on their household size, they may or they may not fall under that level one. But then we also had to include, if they're working, then we've got to include their wages as well. If they're receiving land leads, we include that income as well. So it all adds up and whatever they fall under for their household size, in hopes they don't exceed that level four. And both parents are working or one's going to school, then they will definitely qualify for certificate program.
So if you hear, if you go back and you, your families that want to use this form, to take so graciously, put it on our website. So it's available there, so to share out the comments forum, not only for families, but staff, healthcare providers and then families and community members.
The recording from the presentation also posted, so when you talk about like spreading the word of CCBF, please send to folks who would be interested in utilizing this program. This will be at the district meetings specifically this.
Yeah, so we're, we're going to reach out to Councilwoman Dallas, so that's our first one, hopefully soon. To kind of at least start there, because I know that was a request last week at the PEC meeting. But then kind of, I'll see where it takes us. Our hope is, you know, to kind of share out as much as you can, but then also recognize that we have that deadline. But doesn't mean that it's, we're going to stop there, we can always add things at a later time. It's an ongoing, ongoing journey throughout.
I'm starting to crunching out that plan, because did you see the plan? It's a, it's a, it's a.